Welcome, everybody, to our Planning Commission meeting this evening. City of Washington, January 3, 2024. My name is Commissioner Hanson. I'm the current Chair of the Planning Commission. We're going to go ahead and start this evening's agenda with a prayer by Commissioner Anderson, followed up by the leading of the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Sheil. Commissioner Anderson.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we can gather here today for Planning Commission, that we can gather as citizens of Washington City to talk about land use concerns and projects. Please help us to be fair-minded and to control our emotions. And please help us have the Spirit with us, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
My friend, the leaders of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Commissioners. This evening, before we start, we'd like to recognize some of our council members are in attendance this evening. They're in the back. Commissioner Henderson and our Mayor Staley is here. I don't know if they'll be here for the whole meeting, but we appreciate you guys coming. Thank you. I show of hands today, how many people? This is their first Planning Commission, Planning Commission meeting. Okay, so several. I know that guy's been there more than once. Well, welcome. These meetings are, there's a reason for them. We'll get through that. And I know you've come here because you either want to hear what's going on, or you want to throw things at us, or you want to say what do you think? So we're going to give you an opportunity to all of them. That's why Drew sits here. Drew works for the city. He's our eyes and ears, lets us know what's going on. His staff, Eldon, is there as well, and they fill us with the information that we need. The first thing on the agenda item this evening is an approval of the agenda as is. I had talked to the Commissioners earlier about making a possible change on the agenda item, on the agenda this evening to move item number 6A and to hear that first when we start, because I don't think, is there anybody here that wanted to speak during the public hearing of item 6A? It's the project out by the airport, the commercial buildings? Okay. Commissioners, I propose that we make that change on the agenda item that 6A is heard after 4. Is there anybody that sees otherwise? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion that we do that. Or I can't make a motion. Oh, yeah, I can. I'll look for a motion from one of you to make that adjustment.
This is Sheil. I would move that we adjust our agenda this evening and move 6A right after 4A and then proceed thereafter.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
We got a first and a second, all in favor? All right, thank you. We'll go on to now we need an approval of the agenda as we just changed it and set it. I'll look for a motion at this time for the entire agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. This is Bullock, I'll second.
All right, the first and second, all in favor? Aye. All right, the agenda is approved. Second item is approval of the minutes from our previous meeting from December 6, 2023. You've had a chance to review those in your packets. If you have any changes for Melody. Melody, I almost called you Kathy there. I don't know where that came from. How long has Kathy been gone? Two years? Holy cow. If we have anything to let Melody know about, please do so at this time. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from December 6.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I make a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes from the December 6 meeting.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
We got a first and a second on the approval of the minutes, all in favor? Aye. All right, minutes are now approved. At this time, item number three, we'll look for, this is, for those of you that haven't been here before, this is the opportunity for any of the Commissioners that have a financial interest in any of the items that we have on our agenda. It's the opportunity for them to abstain or have any, or know any conflicts for any of the items on the agenda. I do not have any this evening, Commissioners. Are there any we need to be aware of? No? All right. Item number four, annual business. Drew, do I turn this over to you, or is this something that I just handle? Just handle it. All right, in our packets, Commissioners, we saw the dates of the Planning Commission meeting set for 2024. Were there any changes that you needed to change or make aware, make the body aware of at this time? Otherwise, we'll look to make a motion to approve those as well.
This is Commissioner Tupou. I make a motion to approve the 2024 Planning Commission meeting schedule.
This is Sheil, I second.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor? Aye. All right, the dates are approved for our meetings, and those are posted online. If any of you like to come to additional meetings throughout the year. We'll move to item number 6A. This is a preliminary plat. It's a preliminary hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for ARA Logistics Preliminary Plat located approximately east of St. George Airport, west of Southern Parkway. The applicant is Bush and Gudjul, and I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. This particular subdivision is proposing 15 large industrial-type lots on an area covering 276.68 acres. Buildings on the lots will range in size from 186,000 to 495,000 square feet. Zoning designation at this location is PUDC. The surrounding zoning is C3 to the north, east, and south, and St. George City to the south and west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the ARA Southwest Logistics Center subdivision, and that's on to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. And I would like to just point out condition 13, which is over and beyond our standard 12 conditions, which came from the zone change approval. That was added as preliminary plat, which states Washington Fields Road, south of the ARA Parkway will be built with buildings 104 and 106, or when the St. George Parcels to the south stub their roads to our boundary lines, whichever comes first. And the engineer did a good job on the phasing plan as well. There was a lengthy discussion about roadway improvements with Phase 1. And that's all been detailed out in this preliminary plat as well. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions. I have a curiosity question, and you might not know, Eldon, but what's the estimated time that that road will be completed? I know that they've been working on it from Washington Fields Road to there. Six months, month, two months?
I am not sure on that.
John, Bob, timeframe? March, April. Let's see if Bob knows. He's sneaking up behind you.
Bob with Bush and Gudjul, appreciate your time. Yeah, so our intent with that is that honestly, we're way ahead of schedule on the Washington Fields portion of the road. We actually could have finished it already, but we stopped it short so that we could do our mass grading and soil mitigation. We needed to move across that, and we didn't want to have to work around the road or across it. So we just stopped it a little bit short. And so, and we're going to leave it there to the, to the point where it finishes basically altogether, so that our mass grading is completed in that area. Then we'll finish that portion of the road, and then we'll continue with the phasing plan that Eldon was referring to earlier.
Okay, so it'll be as it is right now for a while? Whatever, six months?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yep, and then there's nobody down there but us right now, so that was kind of the item. And then we'll just kind of match everything together as we get there.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. If there's anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name for the record. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And Commissioners, I'll open the floor, back up for any questions that you might have for either developer or staff, or I'll look for a motion.
So we're doing Phase 1. That's the furthest south building, is that correct? So right there, building 101?
Yeah, so, so there's, Phase 1 is going to actually be Phase 101 and 102. We're going to build together at the same time. They are in two separate phases, just because there's a little bit of timing, right? Differences, but the intent is to generally seal them at the same time. Then we will finish Washington Fields Road with the exterior of those. The city's not completing on both sides of the road. And then Phase 1 also will include ARA Parkway all the way to the left or to the west. Oh, yeah, all the way down, and we'll build all of that that we own, all of that area, all the way down to where it passes the detention pond, that heads north up Hilton Williams and connects to the existing road we just finished for another project over there as well. So that's technically what Phase 1 is.
So it will come, so when those two buildings start, you'll be able to drive without getting on SR7 all the way out to that building?
That's correct.
Okay, that's a, and then the road will basically be finished out to there.
Yeah, you'll basically have two accesses. Our intent is to have two full accesses with the completion of those two buildings. We've also started the design of the interchange as well, so it's under full swing as well for, for the entire interchange, both sides.
Awesome.
When I walked in, I mentioned to Bob that we were going to possibly move this item to the front, and he said the only question he gets is, why aren't you done yet? Like, when is this going to be finished? So the demand seems to be there to have this up and going. I'm kind of excited for it, to see that whole, that whole area develop and what that'll do for the the city and the airport and the ability for companies to come down here being that close. So I'm looking forward to it, but anything else, Commissioners, on this item? I'll look for a motion.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council for the ARA Southwest Logistics Center subdivision located approximately east of the regional airport, west of the Southern Parkway, with the two findings and the 13 conditions.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
I've got a first by Commissioner Bullock. I've got a second by Commissioner Tupou. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Sheil? Aye. Bullock?
Aye.
Tupou?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an a as well. Item number 6 passes unanimously, and we will send that to the City Council with our recommendation for approval. Thanks, Bob. Okay, we'll go to item number 5A at this time. And just, I know there's a lot of people that raise their hand for this is their first Planning Commission meeting that they've come to. One of the things I wanted to mention is that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to our City Council. And so what we do, what we hear is people that come to us and want to change the use of their land. And so although we don't have, I have a finance background. We've got commercial real estate up here. We've got some building, people with building experience and expertise. What our role for the city is, and we've been appointed by the mayor and the council to do what we do, is to listen to the land use in the city and to make sure that we're following state regulations and we're following city regulations with regards to land use. And when we, we hear these things, we are not the body that makes the decisions. All they have been thinking about making sure, I let people know that, because in some meetings, people come up and they want to say things directed at us or to us that we are the final decision makers. What the role for you this evening on comments or situations like this, where there's a decent number of people here that want to speak to particular items, is that you have a chance to put your name attached to your comments and your thoughts and what you want in your area, and that goes to City Council. Whether you, you like or don't like what happens this evening, it goes to City Council for them to make the final decision of what we're going to do. There's been, I think I have the most tenure on this commission at this point. I think I've done it for five years or so. And there's been items that I've passed or that we've recommended to City Council for approval, and they've denied it. There's items that we've recommended as denial, and they get approved. So it could go either way. And so just keep that in mind as we go through and look at this. The sod farm is one that we're going to listen to here in a second. Everybody knows where that's at. Anybody that's moved here, drives by it, sees it. At some point, I think we all knew that it was going to be developed into something. And so I'm actually excited to see what comes out of that, and it's not going to come out of this meeting. So when you have a chance to speak this evening, it's the opportunity for you to put it on record for the City Council, for them to read and to take into consideration what it is that you as citizens are saying. But it's not something that's going to be decided here tonight, so just understand that. Our job is to make sure that they're following the state laws and the city rules, regulations, and that we have here in the city with what they can do with land here in the city. So just keep that in mind. I'll turn that, the time over to staff for their report on item number 5A.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval to change the zoning of approximately 95.43 acres located at 1075 East Telegraph Street. The requested change is from the current zoning of RA2 to a proposed PUDR and PUDC zoning designation. The zone change request is for the purpose of developing the 95.43 acres into a residential and commercial development. The residential component of the development is approximately 81 acres, with the commercial component being approximately 14 acres. The majority of the commercial development is adjacent to Telegraph, leaving approximately 4 acres on the corner of Bullock Street and 1100 East. The applicant will be required and fully understands that they will have to bring back specific design and use plan back before the city for approval prior to building out the project. Again, this request is only for zoning approval with no submitted project plan at this time. This particular location has a general plan land use designation of community commercial, medium density, low density, high density, and planned unit development. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is PUDR to the north, PUDR and R3 to the east, C2 to the south, and R18 and R115 to the west. Staff has no concerns with the proposed zone change as outlined. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z-23-14 for the zone change request from the current zone of RA2 to the proposed PUDR and PUDC zoning designation on to the City Council based on the following findings and conditions in the staff report. And again, I just want to reiterate that this is a zone change application only. We haven't seen any project plans, elevation, site concepts for this. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Perfect. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions for Eldon.
When we're asking for the PUDC, are those the exact acres that they're asking for? Would it change when they came in with the actual design like it? So we wanted more commercial, say, in that? When it would come in, or would we just be approving this, this acreage amount right now of the PUDC?
Plus or minus, yes. It'd be very similar to what is approved.
This is Sheil. A lot of the comments that, that came in are pushing for a little bit more commercial. Can't disagree with them. Comments were they wanted a grocery store here. It's, it's just not big enough for a grocery store. 10 acres just doesn't cut it. It's not deep enough, and it's going to have to be twice that if you put it in a grocery store, a decent grocery store. So that would be my suggestion that they, they deepen that so that you can have a, you know, get, get the truck traffic through there and, and get the pinch point off of, off of that side street.
I want to take a step back just for a second for those here, because there's a lot of acronyms up here, and they probably mean nothing to the people who haven't seen them before. About, I think it was over six years ago, the city came up with a plan, a general plan, what they want to have areas of the city that are not, that have not been developed at that time, what they kind of generally wanted to see there. You know, there's apartments, or we want commercial, or we want this, we want that. And it's kind of a general idea. It's called the general plan. And right now, this piece of land in the general plan, he, he read that to us, and it made sense to us. It might not have made sense to you guys. I just wanted to step back and say that right now, what that's in the general plan, what that's approved and not zoned for, but what that's generally accepted will happen there is community commercial, which is like smaller commercial, medium density in housing, residential housing, low density, which are like bigger lots, high density, which would be like your apartments, and then it's a PUD, what's called a planned unit development. So on the screen, you see that what they're trying to do is come in and change it from what the general plan has it allocated for. They're trying to change it from what they have now, which is, I think it was aggregate agricultural? RA2. To change that to PUDC and PUDR. And so what that means is PUDC is a planned unit development commercial, and a PUDR is a planned unit development residential. So you can see on the map where there's a couple of things they've indicated as possibility. Actually, did we just confirm that it'd be pretty close to that? If they came in with something that the, the box in the front would be commercial, generally speaking, and the PUDC on the other side would be commercial as well. Outside of that, it would be residential is what they're asking us to change there from agricultural to that. In my mind, as I've done this, PUD, really what that means is that they have the option to come in and do a straight zoning and say, hey, we want to zone this as commercial. And then if it's ever, if it's approved, it's just straight zoning as commercial. We never see the next plans. Well, what are you building there? What does it look like? We don't get to see any of that. They build it, and there we have it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Drew, but I just want to make sure some of these people understand this. But the PUD allows us to see what they want to build. The project that was here before us, tonight, that Bob left already, we had the same type of thing. They zoned it so we could see the buildings. We could see what they look like. We could see what we're trying to do here, to see if that's in the betterment for the city. So the city is encouraging developers to come in as a planned unit development, whether it's commercial or residential. So we have, so the public has a chance to see it. So the City Council has a chance to see it. The Planning Commission has a chance to see it, what it is they actually want to put there. So tonight, we're not looking for, what does it look like? What are you building? Like, are they apartments? Are they houses? What are they? What we're looking for is, what they're asking for is for our recommendation to City Council to allow them to take it from agricultural and put some commercial in there and some residential in there. What it looks like and all of that is not something that we know or want to know when an application like this is permitted to the city.
Chairman, can I just insert? Can I insert a little bit of legal?
Absolutely.
So I'm going to read the paragraph in our code that regards PUDC zoning. 9-10E-2B conceptual plan. Says the zone change application shall include a conceptual plan and supporting text materials which describe the proposed land use as density and proposals relationship to the city general plan, as well as the elevations of proposed buildings within the development. Though the city strongly encourages conceptual plans be approved at the time of zoning approval, the applicant may request to defer the conceptual plan design approval to a later date. And then it says that deferrals will have a time limit of 18 months. So what you've got tonight, typically our code requires that they show you everything at the time for a zone change. Tonight's is a deferral. So the planning staff have decided with them that, yeah, with this might, this is a big enough deal. We can, we can change the zone literally just in label only, and they would then have 18 months to come back and bring you all of the other stuff that would be required at the time of, of the ordinance's conceptual plan, which comes with it. So, so typically, we like to see all of that at the same time the zone changes, because that's the benefit of planning, planned unit developments and planned unit zoning is we give you the zone, you show us what you're getting, what we're getting in exchange, right? This is, this would be a deferral scenario where we don't get any of that.
That was the key piece that I did, I left out, that it's deferred to another time.
So is there a chance that, that we move forward with this? So, and they come back and they think, well, I guess we better get a little more EDC, PUDC. Can they do that?
They can always do another zone change, yeah. Yeah, so, so we always allow a landowner to, to bring his own change if, if what they've currently got is, is not what they want to have. And so, yeah, they, you could approve all of this tonight, and they could come back and say, we want to turn out all the PUDC, and we'd have another hearing just like this, another public notice, another chance for the public to give input. And so, yeah, zone changing is always something they have the right to request.
If a recommendation for approval this evening goes to City Council, and City Council approves it at a future date, then that would be the minimum scenario for residential? I'm sorry, for commercial? And residence, close to that is what I heard earlier. So is that?
Both of those would need to bring back conceptual designs, you know, all of the detail that the ordinance states is required but can be deferred.
But it wouldn't be five acres of commercial, or it wouldn't be, you know, 90 acres of commercial or whatever. It's going to be similar and very close to that, is what I understood.
So if you approved this tonight for recommendation and the council approved it, they would still need to bring back all the, all of the detail for those particular allocations. If they wanted to change those allocations, they would need to start with a zone change again. So they would need to redo this process again to change these details.
Just to tag in on that, it's the same process. So they could just come, and if they wanted to go 12 points, something acres on that commercial, they're just going to bring you that design, and you're going to thumbs it up or thumbs it down as, you know, as the Planning Commission City Council. So we run the processes exactly the same. It just buys them some time to do that and also have assurances that they get a planned unit development zone, and they can move forward with that design, so.
One question for sure that I'll have for the developer when we ask him to come up in a little bit is, why, why bring this to us now as opposed to bring it to us once we have the design and everything that we can look at? I'd be interested to see that. Commissioners, questions and thoughts additional for staff?
So this is Commissioner Mitchell, and this is a question, maybe, I had the question come to mind, and I wanted to kind of run it past Doug, but based on population and location, does this seem like a realistic location for a, for a grocery store and that type of application? I mean, to me, it seems like it seems logical, but from your background as commercial, I mean, does it make sense to put something in that?
I think it's coming, absolutely coming. We have a couple of places over there where it can come. So it, it is coming, and, and we have some activity happening that way, so.
Any additional preliminary questions before I open this to the public hearing?
This is Commissioner Tupou. So we don't have, there's no plans for a grocery store to go into this lot currently, okay? Right? Okay.
So this is where deferring, you lose some of the detail that you would normally have, right? And so if they had brought a concept plan, you might have a better idea as to what the plan is for that. Now, I think what the commissioner has stated is in his professional experience, grocery doesn't fit on that shape or size of a commercial piece, right? And so I think what he's saying is if you recommend approval, you're recommending approval for commercial that's not something like a big box grocery. It's some other form of commercial strip. Yeah.
Hey Doug, what types of things can you see on 10 acres? Like what do you see? Doctor's office, strip mall, dry cleaners?
Strip mall, Family Dollar, things like that.
Okay. At this time, what I'm going to do is open this to the public hearing. And before this meeting, we received, ourselves and the city council received comments that were submitted online to the city council. I'll read the names of these people just so you know that we've received your comment. There's no need for you to stand up and tell us what you said in your comments. We have it right here in front of us. Lori, Bonnie, Elon, Kimberly, John, Darlene, Rhonda, Brian. I'm going to say Martine. And the other is a different item. Just making sure I didn't miss one. I think that's it. So again, the public hearing is designed to have, give you an opportunity. We try to keep people limited to about three minutes if you can to come up and express your thoughts, feelings, whatever. If you have questions, we can try to answer them. The public hearing is not designed to be a debate. It's not to argue with us. It's, I guess if you want to throw something, this is your time to do it, but I mean, that's not really, I don't want that either. Please state your name for the record. Melody's in the other room taking notes and we want your name to be on record with your comment as it goes to city council to be read. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing and please come forward and state your name for the record and we'll go from there. Nobody wanted to get up. Everybody submitted. Is that what it is probably? All right. Yeah, come on.
Dick Saunders. I'm really happy that it's a PUD because you're going to get a chance to look at it. But I agree with your earlier comment that they should, they could have just submitted with a detailed plan. And I think most of the people I've talked to think that we're greatly under utilizing our commercial capabilities. And I'm afraid that if you leave it like it is, not that we can't use another strip mall, but we're going to end up with small businesses like we have a plethora of on Telegraph. So my recommendation would be to deny this application, but let them come back with a detailed plan. And I commend them for wanting to do PUD because that's everybody's benefit.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Is Rusty here by chance? Rusty's not here. Okay. Rusty works for the city, for the economic development portion of the city. I know she's always talking about the situation with commercial in Washington. So I was going to ask her to speak to that just for a little bit. But Drew, do you have anything to say about that? Like as far as the demand for commercial in this area?
Yeah, no, I get the point that's made, but I also, I look at it as this perspective as well. Worked with lots of developers over all my many slaved years in city government. Did I say that out loud? Sorry. All my years in city government. But for another thought and perspective is that especially when it comes to planned unit development and the cost that it takes to put a plan together, when you hire professional architects, engineers, and they come up with all that design. Sometimes if you put all that effort, that's why we do planned unit development sometimes too, is allow the deferral. Is that this gives them the zoning, they know they have the planned unit development, which is one of the big, big unknowns. They could bring you the whole plan. Everybody says, well, we just don't want PUD there. So you've spent all the money. You've designed all these, you know, the whole project out. You've dumped lots of money and then you get denied on your zone change, right? So a lot of, you know, developers that I've found over the last 10 years feel more comfortable and this is why we offered this option is that they get the zoning, they know they have the planned unit development approved, the zoning itself. Then they, then they don't mind putting in the money because they know that the biggest part is the city's already accepted. They're, they're good about a planned unit development. Now we just want to see what it's going to look like. So they feel a lot more comfortable now investing that more money, you know, money into design. You know, I hope that makes sense to you is that it kind of gives them assurance of the zoning. Now they'll go back and start, you know, sharpening the pencils and getting that design to you and don't have to worry as much about not even getting the zoning. So that's why this option is, I think, very viable in that aspect. Plus, we know that it's already designated for that as well. And we've gone through the public hearing process to get to that point. So I hope that that helps in your thought process as well.
With the downtown, with the city's plans to redevelop downtown for the look and the feel and things like that, is something like this too far away or is it taken into consideration as well with Will and Bill and some of the architects and things like that?
It might be. It will. But we have a lot of projects that are being approved right now that we can take and say, here's what the city likes to see. You know, you're going to be looking at a few in the next couple of weeks and months that are coming, that are down in the fields area that we can use as great samples and examples of what we'd like people to do. And you have, I don't think there's any, any problem with telling them, here's, here's, you know, the expectation we kind of like to see in design within our city. Now, I just did some measurements. You were probably wondering why I was doing all that just a little while ago, just to give you perspective. On this, if you see where my arrows kind of roaming around up there, the depth there is 430 to 450 feet. That's almost a city block. So when you think about, oh, it's not that deep, that's, that's almost a city block deep up here. City block is 520 feet basically, right? This is 300 feet down here on this front edge on 1100 East. So and then it grows to almost 450 down here. Now they could come back and say, you know what, we did have somebody who's really interested, but they want to go 50 to 100 feet deeper. I think when they bring your plan back, you have, it's pretty easy to extend that out that way on that because again, their plan is going to be a kind of a zone change application itself. So you have that right. It'll be a public hearing. You can give them that design at that point. So just give you that food for thought. I hope that helped.
Well, I think it does help, but for a 90,000 square foot grocer, which is really not a very large one, you're going to, it's 300 by 300. So you still have to park it. You have to get around it. I think it's still tight.
I'm just.
Well, I get it. I don't want to get hung up on the grocer because there's some things happening.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Because there, there is a great possibility a grocer might be coming to the area, not right here. I'm not saying anything, you know, there's a great possibility.
But I think it's scary on our part to not know what's not going in because maybe they got a storage units in mind too. So I think we need to know what's, what's happening.
We're still, we're still in the public comment section. I'm a little surprised that nobody else wants to stand up. Is there anybody else that wants to stand up now they've had a chance to think about it for a minute? It's only the second time this has ever happened. There was one meeting where everybody showed up and nobody wanted to say anything and we were floored. So, all right, last chance. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Melody, actually, Melody, was there anybody online that wanted to speak to this item? Is that even possible?
Not for this one.
Okay. All right. The public hearing is closed and I'll turn the time commissioners back over to you for questions for staff or Matt, if you'd like to come up, the developer will have some questions for him as well. Please state your name for the record. Thanks.
Matt Lou, representing the Turner family on this project. It's been a good conversation. Interesting, the same conversation that happened in this room happened with the siblings. And if anyone knows the Turner family, there's nine of them. Wondering what we're going to do, how to do the grocery store concept was definitely talked about. Would be awesome to even have an opportunity to entertain a grocer like a Lin's or Harmon's. But knowing business and economic development the way we do, that usually is governed by them. We can go and entertain and say, hey, we're here, we've got a space for you. But at the end of the day, those corporations are the ones that make their decisions according to market analysis and according to economics. Some of the challenge, at least one of the challenges that we have specifically with the commercial piece is, I may be mistaken, but we're under the understanding that there is only going to be one access of a Telegraph. That makes it a little tricky to have a full blown commercial operation there. Again, and it's close to the intersection there on 1100. So the access will have to be upstream and you would share access with potentially a residential development to gain another access into the commercial area. We've got some ideas on the entire project and I think as we come in with various stages and various phases, you'll kind of see how that all looks and feels. We did carve out a spot up there towards the future potential Bullock expansion for a post office to be relocated there in that four acre piece. So we've listened, we've had conversations with some staff and some of the community people on how as a family, they can best develop this property and make it a legacy property for them. Obviously, you know, there are two generations at least in turf farming where the things are going in this day and age and where we live and the sensitivity to water and how we're reducing sod on people's lawns. I think it's a great step as a family to think for their future because those siblings, in my mind, I think they're set. I think they're fine. But I think what they would like to do is do something of a legacy project for their posterity, for their kids, for their grandkids, where this is something that they can kind of lean on as they move forward. So we've got, again, we've got some concepts, but first things first, we know that if we have a zoning in place, plus or minus, it gives us the opportunity to dive in deeper and to come back with each phase and present again what we think might make this a legacy project and a project that the Turner family can be proud of. Any questions, commissioners?
Yeah, for sure. Drew, is that something that, can you tell us about the access? Is there's only one access? Is that something that was in a meeting that you were told, is that what it is? There's only one on Telegraph? And it would be right about the middle there? Is that what you're starting to draw, Drew?
Probably directly across from the storage unit piece would be my guess. Again, that road, somebody can correct me. I believe it's a UDOT also road or a city road?
It's just ours.
City street, okay. So again, if it was a UDOT, there comes other challenges with dealing with that scenario. So that's, again, that's kind of what we've understood so far.
Mr. Drew, you mentioned potential Bullock Street. My understanding is the city road plan is going to require that through if it changes from anything other than current use. Is that correct?
For sure.
So when you mean potentials, is it just based on the location?
For sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Matt, I asked a question earlier about why, why now? Why bring it to us without, I think I understand now why you didn't, but just talk to me a little bit about that. Because there's a lot of people here, there's a ton of comments online, which a long time ago, Dad told me never to read the online comments and I read the online comments and I was mad all day because I know it's just, a lot of it doesn't make sense and it's not true, but why, why bring it now? Why bring it? Is it because you just can't get all nine people on the same page yet? And there's a lot of logistics that you're trying to figure out?
No, I think, you know, I think as a family, they've done very well, you know, navigating through the process. I think what we want to do is make sure that what we propose makes sense at the end of the day. You know, we will listen obviously to the good people that came tonight and that will come throughout the process as we go through each phase. And we respect, you know, their comments and we look forward to, you know, hearing, you know, some thoughts there. But really, at the end of the day, we just would like a place to start.
Yeah.
And like Drew referred to, there's a lot of investment going on, you know, with a process like this. We want to make sure that we spend good money after good effort. And I think that's reasonable as far as a request. And this was a great way to start the process and kind of give us a good, how do I say, whiteboard to come in with some, with some great concepts that will fit, you know, the area, fit this parcel. And we obviously are committed to work very closely with staff and get guidance from the planning and from public works and from the other staff members and kind of take their lead and their guidance and follow the codes and the ordinances as outlined. We are not looking at doing anything crazy.
When you, when you said that this is a legacy project, I, I mean that you're, are you saying that they're going to want to keep it as a family unit and develop this into as many rentals as they possibly can? Is that what we're thinking with this PUD? Are we thinking, I mean, I guess we haven't seen those plans yet, but I, when you mentioned that, it sounds like we want to shove as many apartment buildings up in there and whatnot as we can to generate revenue and stuff for legacy to help finance further generations, which is, which is great for the family, but I think we're over built on apartments up in that area is my opinion. But that's, that's my opinion on, on that.
No, and again, we respect your opinion and those thoughts. And again, those are very, very important, you know, for, for them as a family. It is a legacy project. I mean, to be totally transparent, it is, you know, what they can do. They've had this as a working farm for generations. You've got generations now where, you know, siblings are working the farm, you know, for, for their livelihood. So they do want to have opportunities here to do the same and generate some revenue for the next generation. Again, why wouldn't you if you own a piece of property that you can kind of keep within the family? Really, at the end of the day too, it really depends on markets. You know, if you look at, I'm going to bounce real quick. If you look at the markets up north with all the multifamily that was built up there, they're over, there's too much for them up there. So they'll have a challenge the next seven years on having too much, too much inventory. Now saying that with this piece, I believe that there is opportunities here to do something different that maybe has never been done in the county or in the area that will bring a different product line in there that might make it a little bit more attractive compared to a standard multifamily. But if we did go down the multifamily road, obviously architecturally and design will fit a theme. That would work and that would fit. Obviously in that location, my daughter lives across the street from there. There is a lot of that, but we still, we still are lacking housing. No matter what way we build and how fast we build, we still are lacking enough housing. So that's, that's the, that's the tough part to navigate through is what is enough? What is too much? What is too much in a certain area? And is there a way that we can mitigate that or design it so that it doesn't feel like it's just a heavy, low, heavy, heavy sided on one side of the town? And you've kind of spread it out a little bit. So we can be sensitive to that moving forward. Absolutely.
I would, I would hope that they're going to be open to more commercial than this. I would really like, personally, I would like to see that. Out of curiosity, show of hands, people that are here, they have an opinion one way or the other. If you wanted to see more commercial out of this space, I'm just curious. Couple. Okay. All right. For what it's worth. You mentioned the post office. Is that something that's like, now that you've mentioned it, now I'm like, oh, now I'm interested. Is that like something the city's actively really like, hey, that's a good idea and four acres is enough for a post office and we could do this?
Yeah, that acreage is the same as what you have off of River Road, Riverside Drive. It made the biggest post office facility in the county.
Yeah.
Again, we carve out spots to try and help as being a good neighbor to the city to help, you know, move the current post office to a certain location. At the end of the day, it's the federal government
Yeah.
that dictates where and if a post office is going to be relocated. And if so, where to and what are our options? Some of the conversations that's been had, which is probably not the best conversation is, well, we're just looking at maybe centralizing everything. is, well, we're just looking at maybe centralizing everything to River Road Riverside Drive. That doesn't do anything for the community of Washington City. So that's where I believe the elected officials and some of the county officials can step in and says, no, 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 we've got options for you in our city. So we would really strongly encourage you to consider our options.
That would end up being an RFP, meaning they'll have other opportunities to look at.
Correct.
Yeah, and Chairman, various city folks have tried to find solutions for what is viewed as the post office challenge at its current location, the driveway, the accessibility, the traffic, and so there's been an atmosphere for about a year and a half, two years of let's look for options. And I, I know I've been part of some of the conversations with the Turner family of, you know, would you be open to a solution? And so I view that as them hearing the city folks outreach and being willing to do it. Now again, yeah, we, it would be incorrect to say it's a post office because we don't get to make that choice. The federal government does and.
And then maybe touching a little bit more on commercial. I know the city's right now in the process of redoing their downtown and making it more of a walking, commercial, you know, center. We as a family and as an advisor, we talked about carrying that same type of, you made that mention earlier, the same type of look and design to this telegraph frontage so that it makes it seem like it's all still tied in, even though there may be a gap between when the historical downtown finishes and then this property begins. The other side note on commercial, just up the road, exit 13, there's at least 85 to close to 100 acres on the north side of the roundabout that's earmarked for strictly commercial. That's a good place for an anchor. We, like I said, the family love an anchor. If an anchor came to them after this meeting, came to them tomorrow and says, hey, we're really interested in doing a boutique type of a Harmon's like they have maybe in Ivans. By the way, the Ivans, if you remember the Harmon's in Ivans, that entire site is, I think, 11 acres with all of the uses, gas and everything in that site. So again, if we have the opportunity to anchor a commercial grocery store, I believe the Turner family will be all over that. Again, it's just a good thing. But we also want to try and control what we do there as far as commercial because we don't want it too big. We still want to keep it residential. We still want to keep it community. We want to, we don't make it too big. So there's a fine line there and again, you know, my past lives, I've done this for 18 years. I think there's some ideas that we can come to the table that might make it interesting and at the end of the day would make sense.
I think that's what Commissioner Bullock is saying, just the flip of what you just said is the hesitation, I'm going to speak for you, but what I heard is if this shows up to us and it's 81 acres of apartments, we don't want to make it too big.
Yeah, it can't.
So you don't want too big commercial. I'm hearing, and I don't want to see either, of just a ton of apartments over there.
Yeah, and it won't allow it. The design and staff and the, the way things are in your codes would not allow that to happen. We can only look at somebody that happening if there's something next to it that's currently there.
All right.
There has to be a feathering. There has to be a buffer.
Yeah.
There has to be a feathering. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I, I think for me, I think the feathering is a big thing when you, when you bring the design in. I think it can't be just straight, you know, straight apartments. You, you need to have multiple types of, of housing there, you know? And I mean, apartments, they, you know, they're good residual income for the, for the owners, but, but as far as community, you know, things like townhomes, things like that, they actually build, you know, wealth for the community. People are able to start off in a townhome and then they can build equity, sell it and become a move-up buyer and they can move forward in the community as opposed to being a renter for life. And it also would provide a lot of buffer to the neighboring, you know, communities if, if you could, you know, buffer them with a smaller type of housing rather than right up front with, with apartments. I think, I think feathering is going to be a big, big deal, especially where you've got, you already know what's around this, you know, you've got lots of, of residential all around this. Personally, I think, I, I understand that it's hard to know what type of commercial would fit there and I, and I like the, I like the idea of using more of the, the downtown feel, you know, the architecture and working with the, the city's, you know, architectural consultants on that. My, my personal opinion is I think it needs to be more commercial than that. And I know you can always amend and say, okay, here's more. I just, I would hate to have us say, well, here, we'll just do 10 acres and they're in the front and call it good. And I think it's a key piece of commercial property in town. It doesn't have to be massive, but I think we need to have a little bit more commercial would be my feeling. So those are my two things, more commercial and, and make sure we feather it when we, when we look at the design.
Again, appreciate those thoughts and comments and we'd love, you know, to, to, to look at commercial opportunities. Again, what we can control as much as we can, we try to control, but with commercial opportunities, it goes to the various businesses and whether or not they feel comfortable coming to that location and if we have a place for them to be. So that, that makes it kind of hard because that makes it really not, I don't say you lose control, but it's really tricky.
Right. I, I just wouldn't want you to create a, a ceiling for yourself where, okay, we've only been approved for 10 acres. Sorry, that's all we're doing is strip mall.
And that's kind of what we talked about with staff. That's why there's that plus minus. I know it's kind of a vague thing, but we do want the flexibility of, of, of adapting to the needs and the market and the economy. So again, I, I think that's all that, you know, again, the families talk through that as well. They understand. At the end of the day, really simply put, they live there. They live right there. They're not moving and they do want to be proud of this project when it's all said and done.
I guess my, my final comment would just be, I think the, the commission and, and probably council as well would be more interested in, in plus on the commercial side and minus on the high density housing side. So if we're talking about plus or minus.
Appreciate it. Anything else, commissioners? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Matt, thanks. Commissioners, any discussion for, between us or with staff? You guys recommended this as approval or sorry, recommended this as a suggestion that we recommended city council. You're okay with it? Everything was green boxes on our sheet and?
Yeah, just to tag on to what Matt said and what you folks have already talked about is that when they brought this in, the first thing I told them, you're going to have to tie all these uses together in, in a harmonious design, right? So Matt's already aware of that. They've got things that they're already running through with the family, you know, you've got this property that's to the east here, R115. We told them the way our code reads, as Matt was alluding to you, is that you can never ask for anything that's more than one step away from the current zoning that's next to you. So that would mean if I have R115, you could go up one, you can go down one, you know, but you can't, they can't come and put twin homes right next to these R115. We would just, I would giggle and Matt would probably giggle with me, you know, because that, they know that's not acceptable and our code doesn't allow that, just for your understanding. So they're going to come back with R115 here or R112, you know, starting size wise. They're not going to use the R112, but those lots will be equivalent to that and then they'll just work their way down because then you see over here, I got twin homes. Over here I have a King's, King, King Henry and it's a trader park in essence, right? So I'd say it's kind of fits a multifamily. The only way I would even see them proposing stuff for higher ends would be up in this north, northeast corner because that's what's across the street. What's, oh, sorry, I pushed way too heavy on that. I got a fat finger.
While you're pushing that back, R115 is residential 15,000 square foot lots. R112 is 12,000 square foot lots.
Yes.
R16, just so you guys remember.
10, et cetera, whatever the number may be.
Isn't that about 15,000 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is, which is a third acre. R115 is a third of an acre.
A third acre. And that's what everything to the east is basically R115 over here. So they're aware of that and they're going to blend all that. Again, they're a feather it across. So you'll have bigger lots on the, on the west.
So, yeah.
And then you may end up with some, you know, then some smaller, you'll, they could go from R12 size down to 10s and eights and then maybe some twin homes and then some townhomes. And that's kind of what we've talked about, you know, going from east to west, south on Bullock and then more of that multifamily would be up, up here because that's what you have, that's to the north of them and to the east of them. And then you're back to R18 over here on the west and they, you're going to, they're probably not going to do anything in the pond, right, Matt? Is that what I remember? The pond will remain the same?
No, yes.
Okay. So that's what you're looking at. So that's what I expect to see when they do bring that back forward. And we've had those discussions already.
So, so when we're doing this as a deferred submittal, so we approve it now. The next time they come in, they have everything.
Yeah, for the area that they want to.
We're not doing another deferred submittal for the commercial and then the, and then this one and then that one and then this one.
No, then they could even bring back sections, which I'm fine with, but I don't want them to piecemeal it like do 10 lots at a time. I, I don't expect to see that.
That's what worries me is we, we see a piecemeal in here. I'd rather.
But I think you'll, you'll see the commercial development and then you may have, you know, this area done up here and then maybe one or two in here. That's all that I would expect. That would be the highest I would probably see them bringing in. So, or they could, you know, bring that back. It's all up to how fast they want to move and how product's going.
Commissioner Bullock, our hope is that we come in with an entire master plan of the entire site. So you can see what we're proposing as far as uses and then maybe we'll go and specifically carve out, I'll call it face one and go through whatever details we need there as far as submittals, elevations, you know, landscaping, all the whole nine yards. But the next submittal, we hope would be an entire master plan and then we'll break off the master plan and say we want to start at this corner.
Okay, so you'll give us, after this, you'll give us the master plan and we're going to have a commercial here, R18, R112, all that. And then from there, go break down. That's what I wanted to see.
And that's what we'd want to see.
That's, that's what I, I didn't want it to be like, oh, we're just doing the R1 and then we'll figure out where this stuff goes later.
No, there, there has to be, there has to be method to the madness.
Right. And that's, that's what I was trying to make sure. We had the method that everybody understood that there wasn't. We've made other people, we've rejected other proposals, made them come back, not, not with the, the design, but at least the overall, you know, concept area. We made them put it all together as one.
Yeah. And that, that's our next, our next, our next visit with you is the overall master plan.
I think in his own words earlier, he said, this gives them a starting point and I think that that's where I am comfortable with it. I'm comfortable with staff that you're going to guide this developer like you would any other through this process, the way that you do for me. So commissioners, I don't have any additional questions. Anything from any of you? Otherwise I'll, I'll entertain a motion if there are no additional points of discussion. All right. Let's have a motion.
This, this Commissioner Bullock, I move to recommend approval of the rezoning of Z dash 2314, approximately 95.43 acres located at 1075 East Telegraph from the current RA2 zoning to PUDR and PUDC zoning designations with the two, with the two findings and the one condition.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll second.
All right. I've got a motion by Commissioner Bullock, a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an a as well. So this, this, this motion passes and we'll send this to the city council with our recommendation for their approval. Go ahead and move to item number.
Chairman, if I could just let people, that'll happen next week at city council. For those that are here, it'll be on their agenda next week.
And that's what date and time? Wednesday at?
Wednesday, it'll be the 11th at what's that?
At six?
The 10th. Oh, that's right. Today's the 3rd. Yeah, at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn to item number 7A. This is also a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the city council for a revised conditional use permit, C dash 23 dash 17 for a medical office located at 659 North Brio Parkway. The applicant is Hughes General Contractors. And I'll turn the time over to Eldon for the staff report.
Thank you, commissioners. This site previously received conditional use permit approval to build a three-story medical office building located at 659 North Brio Parkway. The previous building was approved for approximately 40,000 square feet and a height of 54 feet six inches. The applicant and their team have revised the site layout and building elevations as shown in the exhibits and are asking for approval of the revised plan. The conditional use is being sought due to the requirements found in the commercial zoning regulations stating that any commercial or professional administration, administrative use development that is over 5,000 square feet in size must obtain a conditional use permit. In the revised plan, the applicant is proposing to develop approximately 2.67 acres of the 4.13 acres. The development includes a single-story building approximately 24 feet tall and approximately 19,540 square feet in size. The intent of the new design is to provide a state-of-the-art medical office building that is conveniently located and configured to best serve this area. Proposed parking for this development is 150 parking stalls. City code requires 121 parking stalls, which includes 42 parking stalls for employees. The proposed parking for this development exceeds city standards by 29 parking stalls. The proposed building elevations have a modern feeling and the proposed landscaping is aesthetically pleasing. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the intent of the commercial professional administrative use regulations as found in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of C dash 23 dash 17, allowing for a medical office complex located at 659 North Brio Parkway. And that's as shown in the exhibits and on to city council with the findings and conditions as outlined below.
Thanks, Eldon. Staff or commissioners, all open the floor for questions for staff. Eldon, off the top of your head, do you know how long ago it was when we saw the three-story building that came in?
I believe it was about a year and a half, maybe just under.
Was there another one that we saw recently? It was not this one, but it was in the same area. I feel like one we just saw like six months ago. Maybe I'm wrong.
Maybe east off of exit 13 possibly?
Yeah.
You may be thinking of the hospital that we did that never did come. It was over off of, like I say, right off the exit.
No, I think I'm with Jason. There was something on this piece.
Just recently.
No, I think you guys were thinking of up on Washington Parkway and Buena Vista Boulevard. Or Main Street where it goes all the way up.
Exit 13, because we, some people had talked about the housing development across the street and we talked about.
Yeah, and the path that came down through the gorge and.
Yeah, right?
And the church that's in the.
I don't know. I, yeah. It leads me to another question that lasted developer later, but I felt like we just, oh, I got it. I'm confusing it with that other piece. The exit 13 where the hospital is, that piece we saw in the last couple of months.
Yep.
Okay, this one was, okay, I remember this.
Because you just redid that, that general plan amendment and everything too on that area and we talked about those.
Okay.
Lots of projects.
I remember this one was an issue because of the three-story and the lighting and some things like that that they talked about.
The applicant did submit a lighting plan. I know there were some online comments concerned with that. There's a photometric plan that details light location and the output of the lights. It's that one on the right there, Drew. Chills, light placement and the light design that they're proposing to use. You can see it's flared down and they are required to push all their light inward towards the site.
Now, when we say that, I need to clarify that for folks, means that all the light needs to be directed inward. You can, you can take a, a beam of light and you can't stop the. glow of the light. Does that make sense? So the beam, they can direct downward, but the glow, I can't keep that from staying at a property line and all of a sudden not glow anymore. Uh, but the beam itself, the, the direct light, you know, seeing it as you look up, they, they are supposed to put these reflectors or fins on to keep the beam being exposed, but the glow, we can't. So I just wanted to clarify that, but they're showing you where their light heads are going to be in, in this one as you look at it. And they will have to keep those beams of light from going into neighboring property.
Oh, one, this is Sheil. One question I have is they're saying that it's a, a single-story building, but it's twenty-four feet tall. What, what's causing it to be twenty-four feet tall? The interior, are they having a basketball court in there or are they having to hide equipment on the roof?
You're probably going to have to have a, at least a ten-foot screen wall for all this, all the stuff on the outside. And probably twelve-foot ceilings would be my guess.
So that's, then that's what I wondered if they're just have to hide their equipment.
More than likely because it'll be screened at the top.
Right.
And then for all their HVAC units.
So, I mean, it's kind of a-
And then that portico chair out front looks large. There'll be at least twelve-foot ceilings in there.
Well, or a twelve-foot interior, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I like the style. I think it's nice.
It's a, it's a good-looking building. And it's not three-story now, so it should be better for the neighbors.
Sounds like that's a matter of opinion, but yeah.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, but it does seem definitely smaller than the previous project that went through on that same piece.
On this picture right here, Drew, will you, if you can recall?
This one?
Oops, sorry.
Oh, you want the building at the elevation?
Yeah, yeah, this is fine.
Okay.
Where the building was when it was three-story. Where was it slanting? It'd be right there, right? It was right there.
Yeah, it's kind of right in here. So, yeah, we're, okay, down here. Sorry, county commissioners, but it wasn't that far difference. So we're talking about right here.
Yeah. So we've moved it over closer to the homes from where it was.
Yes.
Because that was an issue at that time. And I remember talking about it being three stories and how far away that was and whether or not that was really going to be a sightline issue. And this backed up again? No, well, okay.
Is there a gradient elevation between the two?
Yes.
Yeah. Let me, commissioners, let me do this. I'm going to open the floor for the public, open the public hearing at this time. Uh, if there's people here that would like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name. We did receive additional comments online for this particular item. So if your name is Jamie, Dave and Billy, got that twice for some reason? Is it two? Yeah. Um, we did receive your comments as well as city council. Uh, anybody else would like to come and speak to that item, please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Richard Dubois. I live on Via Azul, uh, which is the homes that are on, just on the other side of the wall. The wall is at the back parking lot. If you want to use your pointer to make sure everyone sees that, right there. Um, I'd like to know if the applicant is present.
Yes.
I'd like to have the applicant state why they want to move, uh, from the prior approval, uh, to where it is now. And then I have additional questions.
Do you mind asking your additional ones? We're going to have the applicant come up at the end and ask them. I'm sure he's made a note of them. If not, I've made it.
Uh, being on the opposite side of the wall, um, I would recommend that the planning, this planning body dis, not approve this, uh, this proposed action for several reasons. You've already touched a little bit on lighting and you're right, you can shine a beam, but uh, the, uh, the, the ambient light, the adjacent light is going to come into all of the backyards. Uh, it, it's going to devalue the property values. Uh, and, uh, if you, if the planning board does approve this, it should be with a variety of conditions. One is that there should be no more than one foot candle, uh, illumination coming into the backyards. It should ought to be very specific, uh, so that if you do approve it, then the applicant knows what kind of lighting and reflection that they need to have on those, on those lights. Uh, number two, there ought to be a limitation, if you approve this, there would be a, a, a limitation, uh, as to when illumination is used in the parking lot. Uh, I'm talking about when the lights go off in the, in the evening. But quiet enjoyment of properties on the other side of the wall is significantly impacted negatively. And for that reason, I recommend that the planning board not approve, uh, this proposal.
Thanks, Richard. Anybody else like to speak to this item?
Yeah, my name's Scott Seely and I live directly south. My, I live on that pie-shaped piece of property there that has the longest, uh, connection to that right there. That's my property. And we sit down below, there's a rock wall there. It's about eight foot high, seven. It tapers a little bit. And then there's a, a brick wall or block wall above that. I'm too, I too am concerned about the lighting and again, the devaluation and how that lighting can be redirected. And like, uh, Richard said, what's going to happen at night? Can they turn those off so that it doesn't bother us? I'm not opposed to that being one story. The original one was two and a half stories and about a total of seven thousand square feet. And this one is quite a bit larger. Uh, but, uh, I'd like to know what kind of landscaping they're going to put along the wall on their side and how that would buffer us and what it would future, the future would look like. Um, and that's pretty much what I, all I have to say. Uh, I would support it. I think we need that in that area. Um, and I don't know why they moved it from the lower end up there. I'd like to hear that from the developer. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody else? Oh, Richard's coming back twice. Double the money.
I'm sorry. I just had a, you know, a lapse in, in my mind. Uh, there was a discussion about elevation change. Uh, and the reason, uh, because I attended the meeting a year and a half ago and they came through with their proposed for their three-story building. They had put it on the east side of that property because of the significant elevation change. Uh, they felt that a three-story building would not infringe on line of sight and lighting, uh, all the way back to the road via Azul as well as the cul-de-sac. Well, the elevation change is significant in that, uh, you could not put a three, it would look like a skyscraper at the back of the property because of the elevation change. You had to do, uh, at least a minimum of a one side, one, one, uh, story building, but a twenty-four foot, twenty-two foot building, that is not a one-story building.
Thanks, Richard. Appreciate it.
Uh, Barry Sawyer. I live in the, the Brio complex, just in the area here where the houses are showing. My questions are more, um, the building hours are going to be closed at five o'clock every day. And we have a set of lights that are required by the city. I want some clarification on, do you have to have so many lights, so many feet from an area? For example, if you look at the, okay, so I guess it would be-
These are houses up here?
Both, like an L. It's kind of shaped like an L. You've got, those are lots, yeah.
Yeah. So house is here.
Yep.
House is here.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And I live in that, that corner right there. So what I'm saying is, is you have the wall and then you have some area where you're putting lights close to those walls. Do we have to put those there? Can't we move them back? Can we have the lights be motion activated around that perimeter area? Because it's not as close to their building. And the second question I have, I want you guys to think about, they say there have to be trees there, but I don't hear how tall the trees have to be. You plant a two-foot tree, you know, you don't have trees for years and years and years and that kind of doesn't cover it up. So those are what I want to talk about. Do we have to have the lights be so close? We want them to come in and can the trees be a size that actually make a, a, a point at this point? Does that make sense what I'm asking and talking about?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because it is the city that decides that, that how close to be and how far to be from the building. I don't know what those are.
There's a standard, yeah.
I'm coming from ignorance as far as those, maybe you guys can share what you know about how close to a building or how far away and what we can maybe look at a little bit different.
Mm-hmm. We will, we will.
I think this group would say that we like the smaller building, the story, but we just still need to make sure it's not where the neighborhood, family doctor or house. Could you answer those questions on the lighting and the trees, please?
Sure thing. Anybody else?
My name, excuse me, my name is Vern Dillonbeck. Now, I have a little experience with buildings like this right next to residential area. And my experience is, what is the density of parking actually going to be during the, the time this building is open? Uh, where are the employees going into the building? Where are the customers, if you will, those who are coming for services, going to be parking? Uh, I've seen from my experience, anyone who works at a building like this is going to want to get as close as they can to the entrance. If that entrance is at the rear of the building, right up next to where all us folks are, have our homes and our expensive property, uh, are we going to have lots of car fumes, noise, uh, and different things going on as employees are coming, leaving? Uh, how congested is that going to be in relation to those who are coming for services? How busy is that going to be? Uh, now, again, I don't know all the details because I'm newer coming to this, but it sounds like there's quite a difference in elevation from where this building is sitting down to where it was first proposed. I like the fact, if it was over closer to the, what would be the south end there, it would be further, further away from the residential area. Uh, that's a positive for me and I'm sure for most of the other folks here. There's still a lot of questions that need to be answered here. And, uh, that's my input.
Vern, how long ago did you buy your home? Hey Vern, how, how long ago did you buy your home?
I moved in July, this last July. So I'm pretty, pretty hurt.
Richard, when did you buy your home?
Uh, we just started our fourth year.
Scott?
We tend to have us three full years.
Scott, what about you?
Three full years.
Barry, what about you?
I had two nineteen, actually.
Curiosity, curiosity. Okay.
He also paid a lot of money for it. You bought the whole thing. It's kind of, that got changed.
You should shoot your realtor.
If you guys answer my question.
We're going, no, no, we're going to. I'm getting all the-
Why you can shoot that a couple later?
Absolutely. We're, we're gathering the questions right now and then we're going to try to hit them at once. And it's, just so you'll know, it's the same question almost every development we have. So this isn't anything new. So we're definitely going to hit them. Go ahead.
Dave Flagger, and I'm the pie-shaped back of the building, the hundred and fifty-foot backing. And I bought my property with the view in mind. He just killed our view. He'll block everything we bought the home for. And then the, being law enforcement, you can have nothing but drug, drug trafficking back behind that building, that fence. I've been there, done, seen that. And at nighttime when the lights are down, you'll get all kinds of drug paraphernalia. And the traffic it'll bring back up in the Brio, up that far up in, there'll be nothing but a congested mess. And I guess if it was you guys' homes back there, you had to put a note to it too. Because twenty-four feet above that, with that elevation back there, there's going to be eighteen feet above our fence.
All right, Dave, thanks.
Keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Emmanuel Daniel. And we moved in there in two thousand and twenty, March two thousand and twenty. The last meeting we had last year or year and a half ago, the building was going to be, uh, right close to the fire station, you know, in that location. All of a sudden, why it was changed, I don't know. The second thing is, where, where they're going to build this building is going to be right by the residential area. Why can't they just move it where it used to be and not, not us? And the, the third question is also similar. Why is it twenty-four feet tall? Uh, and, and right by our house, by the view, you know, and all that. So it's, it's kind of a, initially what I thought is what's happening is they wanted to get feel for it, see if they can build the building. Okay? And so they came out and proposed a location which everybody will buy. Okay? And everybody bought that. Then all of a sudden, now, when they want to build it, they want to build it right by the residential area. Why can't they just move it right by the main, main road there? That's my concerns.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Billy and I'm, I live right behind that building. And I, my thing is, if you, they put it there, they say there's another phase. Well, if they put in another phase, what about all that parking that they're supposedly supposed to have? Or is he saying right where it's at right now, he has that hundred and twenty parking space that, that the city requires? And they changed it. I mean, we bought into or went along with the city planners when they put the building up front. And then we went along with them again when they saw, said, now we need a three-foot building. Now they're saying, now we want to put it, and they told us when they put the three-foot building, they would not put a building right back there. They told us that. Now they're going back on their word. I don't even trust them to stick with twenty-four feet. Because they're going with the, they are approved for a three-foot building. And then they're going to have that second phase going in too. What's that going to impact? That whole parking space, it's like one of our people said, they, people will park the closest to the building. They can't get into a parking lot, they're going to park on that street. You know, I mean, this really impacts us because we got twenty-four feet plus staring at our yard. And it's that close, it just killed everything. Our dream just went down. So has it our property values. Thank you.
Thanks, Billy. Anybody else? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And commissioners, I'll turn the time back over to you for, uh, any questions for staff. And then in a minute, we'll have the developer come up. Some of the questions that I'd like to hear the developer answer that I heard, uh, certainly talk about lighting, why it was moved, why it needs to be twenty-four feet tall. And I am a little bit interested, I mean, I think I know the answers to almost all these, but I just want to hear for everybody else's sake as well. Um, if there is a phase two, additional parking should be coming with phase two. This is strictly for phase one, the parking that's there is the way I understood it, but address the parking issue as well. So commissioners, any additional questions that you'd like to hear about or questions for staff?
I have a question for staff. I don't remember the three-story building, I must not have been here or missed that meeting. But is this not part of the Brio subdivision, or is it part of Brio?
It's part of the Brio master plan development.
It was part of the Brio master plan. So like, we had earlier with the, with the PUDC and the PUDR, we had earlier tonight, this was designed to have these buildings AP.
Well, it was set aside for commercial development on the master plan.
It was set aside for commercial development. So it's, since they developed Brio, this has always been designed to have commercial development there from, from go. Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that that's what it was. Because I was, I'd missed this on the previous ones, that's what I was just curious about.
Commissioner Anderson, um, I just wanted to try to answer some of these questions that people had. Uh, one, one thing is that the, just so, just for some point of reference, the, the back wall that backs up to most of these homes, you know, you've got, every lot's a little bit different, but you've got about an eight-foot retaining wall plus a six-foot privacy wall, so you've got fourteen feet. The, the back of this building, if you look at the plans here, is only seventeen foot eight tall. The only thing that's twenty-four feet tall is a little teeny piece above the entrance, which is clear on the other side of the building. So far away from you guys. So the, the height part, yeah, that little thing that's right above the, above the entrance, that's the twenty-four-foot piece, that little teeny thing. The rest of it is seventeen foot eight, which if you've got a, a height difference of fourteen feet in, in the backyard, you're talking three foot eight over the top of the wall, which, if you're standing anywhere within your backyard, you probably won't see it as far as the building itself. I mean, lighting and all that, that's, that's a whole different issue. But, but as far as height of the building in relation to lots and stuff, it's probably, at least just from the, the measurements here, it's probably a lot shorter than you think. At least with the area that it's, that it's at.
Let me ask a question real quick about that, sorry to interrupt. So if there was, this building at this height was all glass, and a concern was brought up that you're building a building with all glass that's going to look down at my backyard, that is not possible with what we're talking about, okay?
That, that'd be a question for the, for the builder. Yes, I'm, I'm just talking about the, the elevations as it currently sits, and the elevation shown on the building. It might even be sit lower based on how they're going to cut the lot, I don't know, we'd have to ask the builder. That's not, that's not a question for me, that's, that's a question for their architect and, and what, what, you know, meets code and so forth.
We'll add it to the list for the developers, see if you want to answer that.
But, but I will say, some, some of you had a question about, um, like parking. It shows on here where the employee parking and where the, the customer parking is, it's in the packet. Um, that's online for everybody, it's on the backside where, where it backs up to the lots, that's designated as employee parking. And on the other side of the building, away from you guys, is where the, the customer parking, and it's designated on the plan here for that. The landscaping, um, that's shown on the, on the landscaping plan here. However, with, with the drop in elevation, yeah, you, you, you probably won't ever have a tree that's going to block the view because it's going to be quite a ways down there. I mean, it'd have to be a pretty big tree for, and be pretty old to block any view. Um, the lights, that's going to have to be a question with, probably better for Drew. What kind of lights and so forth, that sort of thing.
Let's go ahead and hold our comments to the end. Or actually, I'll open it up in a little bit because what I don't want is anybody just shouting it out. I know you have comments and questions and concerns, and we're going to try to answer some of these things, and it might bring it up. But just to, to store some order, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to all the questions in a second.
Yes, that was, that's pretty much it. I don't know if you heard Barry or not, I was trying to answer your question with the landscaping. There is a landscaping plan there. It's not likely any of those trees will ever reach over the top of those walls because it's enough of an elevation drop that you'd have to have a pretty tall tree to ever make a difference there. But they do have lists on there what kind of plants and stuff they're doing. No, I, I, I said that would be a question we need to maybe have Drew answer to see what, what the code is as far as lights and so forth. That's not something that any of us would know, so.
Awesome. Again, I'll come back in a second and ask, open the, to make sure everyone gets their questions answered, if we can. Again, we're not the experts, we're trying to find out some of this stuff as well. Um, so we'll, we've made a note. Any additional questions that we can ask or put on the table now, someone will call the-
So is there another phase?
I have a-
Phase two, there was a question about that. Is there something that, that could be shared, the potential phase two? Can we ask that at this point, or?
On, yeah, but I have another question on this one real quick. On those, it, it's calling for covered parking on the back lots, or the employee parking are, but they're not showing anything rendering.
Of what the stalls would look like?
Is it just a, but on the, okay, I just want to make sure that it's, we know that it's going there.
Yeah, it's called out, it meets the setback. If they were closer to the wall, you have to be ten feet off of the property line for any structure. They're showing fifteen feet, so it meets code. We don't, again, you don't have the detail, we can maybe ask the- You know, most of those are, they're not that.
I just wanted to make sure that it was pointed out because it was, it's just, it's stated there, and they show landscape, but it doesn't show it on the landscape. I'm just saying, it's, it's just not showing it on the, you have your landscape, but then you're going to have covered parking right there as well. So I just wanted to make sure we pointed that out, so we all saw that.
In the city, Drew, for commercial property, what is the maximum height that they can build, anybody can build without a request for something higher?
Commercial properties can go to forty-five feet.
So from the beginning, before any of these houses were sold, part of the Brio development, commercial could have come in and built a forty-five-foot building?
Well, back at that date,
It was last-
It would have been thirty-five.
Okay.
But the city's adjusted their commercial and their multifamily to forty-two and forty-five. So it has gone, but at that point, and, yeah, thirty-five would have been, but they're still under the thirty-five.
So I'm just trying to establish so people understand that this, and they know this, anyone that, the reason I ask you guys when y'all moved here is, I knew this has always been slated for a commercial. So anybody that bought any of these houses, I see a guy raising his hand, I'm hesitant to call him, because, go ahead, what are you going to ask?
When we first talked about this, this building right now, the one story, what they said, that wall would have been a lot, that type building, one story.
So what I'm talking about is land. When this was all dirt, when it was dirt, this is why I didn't want to call on you. I'm talking about years before that. As much as you want to roll your eyes at me, I want to roll your eyes back. So just give me the credit, and I'll give you the credit, I watched you. Okay, let me start over, let me start over. When Brio came to us, okay, this would have been five or six years ago, and it was dirt. This particular corner, and there are other places around this that are slated for commercial development. So anybody that bought it, my point is, anybody that bought a house in Brio at any point in time, no matter what your realtor said, no matter what somebody told you, this was slated as commercial. Now, what I wanted to ask Drew, if somebody wanted to come in as a commercial property and build right now, what could they build? And the worst-case scenario would be forty-five feet.
Well, forty-five feet, yeah.
Forty-five feet tall, okay?
Today.
So what I was then going to say is, we did see this development come in with a two-and-a-half, three-story building in a different location. And one of my questions is, like other people have suggested here, why did it move? What are we doing here to the residents? No matter what, in my tenure up here, no matter what we build, the residents aren't happy, for the most part. Somebody's always upset about it. So within the constraints of what the city allows, in a development that is, from the very beginning that a shovel went in the ground, this is slated to be commercial, we have to take into consideration that for everybody. A developer's coming in, trying to do what they can to, to profit, to make money on their land, which they have every right to do, just like you have on your homes. So to marry the two of these together, I'm totally willing to be respectful and help you understand why things work the way they do, or why things don't work the way they don't do. And if you don't like it, there are some things that you can't, there's, it's a law. There's laws that you have to follow, there's things you have to follow. You can't protect your sightline. So if somebody wants to build a forty-five-foot building in your backyard, you're going to have one. That's not my fault, that's not their fault, that's not your fault. That's what the, that's what the city has allowed to have happen. And so I can understand this, and when I open it up for public hearing, and I want to hear the public comments, that's great. Where I get a little bit frustrated is like that. And this, and yelling, and saying all these things. I'm totally happy to try to get you your answers, I don't know them either, and I want to get them, but I feel like I want to have some respect up here. And I read the comments, and I don't know the developer, I don't even know his name. I had to look to see who it was, and he raised his hand. We get comments that you're in the pockets of the developer, and we've already made our decision. I haven't made my decision, I want to know why he's moving it closer to the homes. So I'm trying, I'm aloof, I mean, I've been frustrated all day, I guess, about things that I just, I, I have to step back and go, look, people just need to be educated, that's all. This was commercial, and there's things that can happen here. So I want to work with you guys, but when I see somebody roll their eyes at me, I don't appreciate it. And I know you said you didn't, but I'm going to call you out until you did. Okay, there you go. In about, about a short second, I'm going to ask you to leave, and that's why we have an officer here. I didn't come into this meeting looking to yell at you. You're being disrespectful. So I think that's the last I'm going to put up with it. I'm going to give you about ten seconds to say anything you want to say right now, and then that's about it. And I'm going to try to help you, what do you want to know from the developer?
That's why I'm saying, I don't want you to have a whole lot of-
I can tell you, I'm, all right. We're going to move on, but I'm not going to sit up here and make it up, I can tell you that. So I'm going to go ahead and move on, and I'm going to turn it over to you Commissioners, if there's anything you'd like to say, because I got to take a second.
And this is Commissioner Anderson, I have a question for the developer. So the, the lot itself, you know, drops about, uh, from the corner edge of the building, quite a bit, looks like, you know, twenty-sixteen to twenty-nine, about ten feet, is, are you cutting into the lot with the building? Or are you, are you raising it, where, where's the, you know, where's finished floor, based off of?
Yeah, so I'm Travis Davis with Hughes General Contractors, and I presented the, the previous version as well. And so to answer your question, on that backside, where we have about an eight-foot cut. So the building will be eight feet lower in the ground than the current grade now.
Okay, that's, and that's kind of what I thought, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, and, and that's pretty astute, because if we were down eight feet, and, and the owners of the project, uh, the stakeholders, um, I will say that their driving, um, directive throughout this was, one, to provide easy circulation for all of the patients that are coming in. So that means driveway, as well as when they get in the building, being able to navigate the building easily. So that was the number-one directive. Because it's our patients, that's their business. And the number-two directive was, in a way, that, that balances the needs of the, the adjacent landowners. So from the beginning, we've been working, understanding that lighting is an impact, views are an impact, traffic is a concern, and also light and parking. All of these things are concerned, so we've been trying to massage and manipulate the building to, to meet the needs of everybody. And we made a conscious decision to lower the building that eight feet, um, so as to reduce any sightline. If you look on the, the neighbors along the back property that line there, so if we're down eight feet, the rock retaining wall is about five feet, and then a six-foot, um, concrete block wall on top of that, um, standing in the backyard, I don't know that they'll even be able to see the, the building at all. Um, the height of the building, the, the twenty-four feet, is just that little section at the entryway. And we made that in the center of the lot intentionally, rather than putting it off to one side, because the farther away from the lot, the, the more it diminishes in view conflict. Um, the ceiling heights in our clinic for the clinic spaces are nine feet, which is typical. And then you have structure, just the roof structure, and then the roof equipment, the mechanical equipment, which, um, is screened by these walls as well. So it's a, the, the reason the building height is the way it is, is to make it look good and screen all the, um, the ugly rooftop units. And you can see there in the renderings we've provided, you can't see any of the rooftop units, it's just clean sightlines. And then again, it's recessed down into the ground to where, um, it's barely the height of the, the block wall on the backside.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so just, just so everybody else kind of understands, that, that's kind of what I was getting at, like, so this is, besides what I said before, this means the building is sitting eight feet lower because the, out where their entrance is, is about eight feet lower than back up by the wall. It's the whole parking lot and everything sloped. The parking lot behind the building will be kind of where the wall is, but the building itself is sitting down lower. And so that way, you've got a seventeen-foot-eight-tall building, and it's now down in the ground, which means it's only, you know, nine foot four inches out of the ground on the backside. You guys have got block walls and privacy walls and everything else. The only part that, that's, that's twenty-four feet is, is the sign out front, which is, again, going to be still below your block walls, and there's no way you're even going to see it from your backyard unless you climb up on top of your privacy wall. So I, I, anyway, I just wanted you guys to understand how the, the topography and everything works with that.
Well, and, and another measure that we did to help mitigate just the traffic up against the walls was we did the employee parking on the backside of the building. Um, because that way, the employees come in the morning, they park, and then they leave in the afternoon. It's not a constant traffic change. Um, in fact, yeah, and that's, that'll be just designated employee parking back there. And in an attempt to just reduce the amount of moving cars along that, that property line.
It also looks like, just from this, it looks like there's, there's gated access to that back, uh, the employee parking as well. So it's not like anyone can come and go, it's a gated, gated parking lot for employees only.
Yeah. And the gates are down at night, obviously, so to keep-
What's the typical hours of operation?
Uh, eight to five-thirty.
So can, can-
And Monday through Friday.
Yeah, can some of the lights be maybe shut off?
We, we're, the lighting's a little bit of a trick for us because we have to design the lighting for the city ordinance.
Right.
And security.
Yep.
You know, we, we do want to make sure, we don't want a dark alley back there. So we do want to make sure that we have security, but yeah, we don't want to overlight it. Uh, we'll just follow the, the city ordinance for lighting.
Travis, I remember when, I don't even recognize your face, that you were the guy that came in, I mean, it was a while ago. But I remember having this, and I remember having people come and talk about, uh, the same things that we're talking about tonight. What was the reason for changing it from the three-story, or roughly three-story, to the one where it's at now?
Uh, the initial plan, there were more, uh, contributing partners. The, due to the change in the economy and, and just economics for them, they, they haven't joined the project. So the core owners have taken this now, and, and we've gotten down to a single-story building.
Is there a plan for a phase two that might have an additional bigger building that we need to be concerned about?
No, we don't have any plans for phase two right now. Um, the only portion we're developing is what we need for this project. And that's it, we have, I mean, it's just, they bought the, the property for that, the three-story building. Um, turns out that we now only need the one story, and so we're developing the amount of ground that will support that one-story building, and we don't know what phase two will be. Um, envisioning something similar to what we're doing now, but, you know, we'd have to go through the same process.
Yeah.
But no, we don't have any plans for the phase two yet.
While you're here, there is, uh, Billy, right? Did your question get answered that you had? Did your question get answered that you had?
Yeah, down.
Travis, Travis, do you mind restating her question just so we can get it on the notes?
Okay.
Or just some version of it?
Yeah, and let me make sure I understand you as well. Basically, what you're asking for is, or, or asking is that. In phase two. That we don't. I, would you mind repeating it, sorry?
If you don't mind coming up, Billy, that would be the best because you can get your, your notes on the record so the city council can see it. The lady's in the other room taking notes, that's the only reason is you'll have to speak to her.
I was just going to say on the plaque that we got in the mail, it shows this. And then it said, phase two, 86,000 square feet. So, but you just said you're not going to do the phase two yet. Or you're not going to do it because you probably didn't have partners?
Yeah, we don't do, we, we won't do it. Yeah, we're not in a position to do phase two yet. That is just basically leftover land. It's 86,000 square feet of land that's left over.
Okay, so it's, it just said phase two, 86,000.
And that's of land, not of building. Yep. So, yeah. No, that's confusing, that's a, that's a good point.
Any, anything that would come in phase two and, I mean. I would assume eventually something will come into phase two. But at that point in time, they would go through the same process to show whatever they want to put in phase two.
With regards to another question, yes. By the way, we can either restate it or you have to say it in the microphone, otherwise we won't be able to put it on the record so city council can see it. He actually answered that question already.
I was just wondering why location change? Because I know you were here last time, you know, when you, and you were, you were all swear, you know, you were just saying. That the location is going to be where it was going to be in three-story building. And I, I understand you are saying that some of the partners, you know, left. But you can still build it where you initially decided that you can build it?
That's actually an excellent question. Yeah, when it was a three-story building, it had more square footage of, of space. Which required more parking. So then the parking filled the entire site. So when reduced the amount of building square footage, the amount of parking shrank with it. And that would have left a little sliver of property on one side and a little sliver of property on the other, which would be basically unusable. So when the building foot punch shrunk, the parking shrunk with it and we moved it to one side. To then consolidate the property. So that we do now have phase two can be something that's actually buildable and usable. If we would have left it in the middle, we'd have an island of development and then nothing to build around. And we just, there's, you can build anything around it. It'd be wasted real estate.
To me, it's a big property, you know, and so I think that you can still change the location if you want to. But what, what we are concerned about the residents here is why. Ride by our homes and not away from homes. That's our main concern. Because when we bought the property, everybody told us it's going to be nice view and everything is going to be fine, but it's not fine. So that's our concern.
Emmanuel, thanks for your questions, appreciate it.
Yeah, and well, and that's, that's a good point. And I want to reiterate the view. Because when you're here the first time, that was a big deal. And our, our petition before was to get a zoning height change exception, which we got. Which obviously we don't need now. So we knew that was an issue and that's why we've, again, made the conscious decision to lower that building to where you won't see it. You'll see right over the top of it. So like, we're, we're doing, we're doing everything we can, but we still have to, you know, make it work for the, the real estate that we have.
No, sir, no, sir. I don't want to turn this into a back and forth with the developer. He's building an awesome project compared to what I saw on the first time on this. And I'm, my patience is about over with the trying to make him move his building and all that stuff. So thank you for your time, appreciate it. There's a question back here from the gentleman, I can't remember his name. I think it was lighting and I'm going to hit that and then I'm going to move on. You had a question about lighting, was that your main question that you wanted to ask?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And Travis, I don't know if you know that, you, you probably know that, but Drew, I don't know who takes that, but lighting is obviously a big.
I don't have that on hand right now. All we know is we make, again, the condition is always that it should be directed inward to the site. We don't allow the beams to go out. And, but we'll, whatever that requirement is, we'll, we'll hold them to that. I just don't have that available right, right at this moment, so.
Okay. Clearly, you've already expressed there's, was concerns the first time from residents. You've expressed it again tonight about lighting and all these things. I don't see a scenario the first time or this time that you're trying to do something where you haven't taken the residents into consideration. Is that a fair statement?
That's very fair, thank you.
Anything you'd like to add, any of the other questions or concerns that you've heard from the public tonight?
Yeah, just really quick. I do appreciate all the neighbors that they've taken the time to see what's going on here and come and. And give their input and their thoughts, it's valuable to us, we like to hear it, we want to be good neighbors. And again, I'm grateful that everybody's doing it now rather than when we start construction and then everybody's surprised. So thank you all for your, your comments and, and looking into the project.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or concerns that you have? Or comments? If not, I'll look for a motion on item number 7A.
I just remind you, this does go to city council, says a recommendation.
Ms. Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of C-23-17. Request for conditional use permit for commercial development along Buena Vista Boulevard. Over 5,000 square feet and floor area located approximately 659 North Brio Parkway. With the four findings and eight conditions outlined by staff and send it to city council for consideration.
Ms. Schill, I second. I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson and I've got a second by Commissioner Schill. Individual voting is, we'll start with Anderson.
Aye.
Schill?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. This motion passes. We'll send it to city council for recommendation for approval. Drew, when will they see this at city council? Is this also next week?
Next week at 6:00 PM, the meeting starts.
Okay, next week, 6:00 PM, meeting starts here. Thank you all for attending on that particular item. Commissioners, time for adjournment if there's, if there's nothing else that needs to be discussed at this time? No?
Ms. Schill, I make a move that we adjourn this meeting.
This is Bullock, I'll second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.